All right, I'm calling this meeting to order this October 14th, 2025. Roll call. Cat Berry.
Here.
David Harwood.
Here.
Melissa Pickett.
Here.
Doug Matheson.
Here.
Pete Green.
Here.
Okay, everybody's in attendance. If you would, please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance.
To the right, on the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All righty. Approval of minutes, September 9th, 2025. Do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion, any changes? Okay, Cat.
Aye.
David?
Yes.
Melissa?
Aye.
Doug?
Aye.
And Pete?
Yes.
Okay. Approval of regular agenda. Motion.
So move.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, Pete?
Yes.
Doug?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
David?
Yes.
And Cat?
Aye.
Okay, regular agenda is adopted. Consent agenda, budget amendment 2025-18, project ordinance 2025-04, and tax releases. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, there's of course no discussion with consent agenda, so we will vote. Cat?
Aye.
David?
Yes.
Melissa?
Aye.
Doug?
Aye.
And Pete? Okay, consent agenda is approved. All right, public comments. If you would like to speak for three minutes, please hold it to three minutes. Please give your name to Hillary over here. Thank you. Tricia Aiken. Hello, Ms. Aiken, if you would just state your name and your address.
Yes, my name is Tricia Aiken, and I live at 252 Heather Ridge Lane. I am a full-time Blowing Rock resident and have been for a bit, over five years, and I'm here to once again bring up the issue of speeding and traffic on Green Hill Road. I live on Heather Ridge, as stated, and I'm here to discuss the speeding. And yes, I'm familiar with the Green Hill Traffic Study that was completed in '21. I'm here to tell you why I'm finally moved to come and speak tonight, how traffic is now on Green Hill, and how things have changed since '21, when the study was done. About six weeks ago, as I was driving home, I passed my 97-year-old neighbor who was checking his mail at his mailbox. A week later, his mailbox had been mowed down. And that is what brings me here to ask for your help. Green Hill is a residential street that's being used as a cut-through highway. I walk my dog several times a day, and I cross it. My 85-year-old neighbor walks, who walks with a walking stick, walks every single day and crosses Green Hill. So do many other 70s to mid-80s people who walk. Some walk down Green Hill to try to get to Wonderland or to Heather Ridge because there's no other place to walk. There are no sidewalks, there are no gutters. There are a lot of people trying to walk in this residential neighborhood. Here's a map of the area that I want to talk about tonight. This is the Blue Ridge Parkway. This is all Green Hill. This is the Wonderland Woods area. The study covered this area. I want to talk about this, the red, four tenths of a mile. And yes, I know that it is state-maintained. The town limit is right here, right at about Wonderland. I first contact, because it's state-maintained, I first contacted my state representative to discuss this, and I received no reply. But all of this is in the Blowing Rock ETJ, and there are a lot of Blowing Rock citizens who live here that are being negatively affected because of this four tenths of the road. Green Hill Road is the cut-through street for anybody that is traveling from that side of Boone to get to 321. It's a residential road. The speed limit is 25. It is a very narrow road. I went and measured it, and along here, the width is between the white lines, is between 14 and a half and 15 and a half feet. As I said, no sidewalks, no gutters. It does not meet the North Carolina State Minimum Width for a road of 20 feet, and it's narrower than any street I could find in Blowing Rock. From here to here is downhill. From here to here is downhill. So cars come off the parkway flying. The other day, I pulled up at 5:00 in the afternoon to go left. They don't even slow down as they're trying to get home to Lenore, tires screeched as they came through. This is every single day in this residential neighborhood. So what did the study change? What did the study show and what has changed? The study said that the average speed was 27 southbound. But what was studied was the part that was in Blowing Rock. This part wasn't studied. It also showed that there was an average of 381 vehicles per day on Green Hill. But in 2023, for safety reasons that I applaud, there was a light foot at Green Hill and 321. So now it's so much easier for people that are working up here and going to Charlotte or Lenore to turn left on 321. So actions that we took to increase safety have increased the cut-through traffic on this road. As an example, this morning, I walked my dog, so you can understand the amount of traffic. I walked my dog. I crossed right here. In the span of, at 8:00, three minutes of crossing there, seven vehicles came by, and five of them were construction trucks or vans. This is the state of the constant traffic on this road. I believe that the only solution are speed bumps. Speed bumps up here that maybe go into here. And Charlie tells me, Mayor Cellar, excuse me, tells me that the city has tried to work with the Department of Transportation, because this is state, we need your help to do more. And the citizens are ready to help. I think everybody in this neighborhood, I will lead the charge. I will do the work. My neighbors will hurt, will do it. In the short term, can the police please do what was in the Green Hill study and set up the, put up the speed feedback signs? Can we set up some speed traps? There would be people with reckless driving things every single day. We need your help. We ask for your help. Thank you for your time.
I will say that yes, that has been addressed, and I think that it can be addressed again. And I think the best route to take is for you all to get in touch with your representatives, the names that you've been given, and forward, and maybe Shane, you can look into what our options are now, because we tried our best before. So, thank you. All right, Linda Lassiter.
Linda Lassiter, 559 Morningside Drive, Blowing Rock. I just want to say thank you to Jennifer for allowing the Tai Chi classes to take place in the rec center every Tuesday morning at 10:00 a.m. And I want to thank the crew that came by and vacuumed up the leaves on Morningside Drive this morning. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Lassiter. It does say, we have some good people that work for our town, without a doubt, for even better citizens, so thank you. All right, Melissa Tausche. Good evening, Melissa.
Good evening. I'm Melissa Tausche. I reside at 1741 Sunset Drive. Ms. Aiken, this is very timely. I was almost T-boned on that road a week ago, so I do hope that is something that can be looked at again. I recognize how hard that is. As I've been researching things, the one thing that keeps coming up is recurring things year after year after year after year. Water sewer, parking, I think the, I found parking references going back 40 years, just like the, varying, the power lines went back, what, 50 years? Preserving our small-town charm, being, preserving our neighborhood, being civil to each other. And I just wanted to say that I know we have hired consultants for, particularly for parking. I've read over those, what the consultants came back with, with their recommendations. One of the recommendations was actually a communications officer that would help keep the citizenry more informed than everyone feels like they are being now. So all I wanted to ask for is when we do pay for consultants to do things, I think the citizens would appreciate either feedback on that. We would like to see some action taken. If we're going to be spending money on these, on somebody coming in telling us what the best way to handle a problem is, we would like to see some action. And I had the good fortune of being able to come downtown Saturday and enjoy the lines of traffic. But it was absolutely wonderful to see people coming and to see the town that busy. So just, that's all I wanted to say. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Melissa. All righty. We have a special presentation tonight. Tim Everett, I'll let you lead out from here.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and Council. Timothy Everhart, or Tim Everhart, is unfortunately not able to be with us tonight, so Tim's dealing with some health issues, but he's got his entire team, or folks that are here, from Traything Green, to James Townsend, to Toby and Bud at the water plant, all here to support Tim. So Tim just recently retired from the town after 40 years of service. So to say that again, 40 years of service. We do not have another employee of any knowledge, at least that we can find, that even came close to 40 years of service. So we've got a plaque here that we're going to present to his coworkers and let them take those, that plaque back to him. And as I was thinking through of words that came to mind when I thought of Tim, this is a list of words from dedicated, steadfast, loyal, fixture, unwavering commitment, pillar of service, legend, seasoned, institution, expert, knowledge keeper, well-versed, go-to person, historian, master of their craft, icon, trusted, reliable, diligent, professional, dependable, efficient, problem-solver, and friend to all of us. Tim's steadfast dedication has proven the foundation of health and well-being for every resident and visitor for the past 40 years. His contributions cannot be overstated, and he will not be replaced. Tim, for 40 years, was a senior operator at our water plant. So for anyone that's ever visited this town in the past 40 years that has drank a drop of water, Tim had something to do with that. His coworkers here today continue on Tim's legacy of 40 years of great work and dedication to the town. So hopefully Tim will be able to make it back to another meeting that we can publicly present this to him maybe once again, and shake his hand, and everyone can applaud. But tonight, we say thank you to Tim for 40 years of service. And Toby, if you don't mind, you guys coming up, I'd like to present this to you to take back to him. So thank you all. So I'm not sure that we have anyone at this point past Mr. Rothrock that I think is celebrating 25 years. Is that right?
Ken's a little ahead.
28 years, that's correct. So we're a long ways to get to 40, so 40's quite the accomplishment. But again, thank you to Tim for his 40 years of service to the town, guys.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you for all your hard work. And Kevin Rothrock will be here in at least another 20 years, I guarantee. Yeah, if you could, see if you can get Tim to make, if he's feeling better during the next meeting, that'd be great. Okay. All right, moving right along. Special press of regular agenda, Valley View Bid Award.
Again, Mayor and Council, thank you. Going back a year, September 27th, 2024, Hurricane Helene caused a catastrophic slope failure on Valley View Road at the intersection of Old Orchard. The town, in coordination with a local contractor, successfully constructed a temporary access road to allow residents to reach their homes on Old Orchard. Since that time, town staff has worked diligently with not only FEMA, but town engineering firm McGill and Associates to develop a comprehensive scope of work for the permanent repair of the slope and road access, not only on Valley View, but the permanent replacement of Old Orchard and the access to Old Orchard. After numerous, numerous meetings and months of collaborative effort, the scope was finalized, allowing the town to move forward with the bid solicitation process. The town began soliciting bids for the permanent repair project in August 26, 2025. Unfortunately, on September 25th, 2025, a month later, we were unsuccessful in our obtaining three bids, only at the time receiving one, so we put the bid solicitation back out for additional two weeks. And on October 9th, 2025, the original bidder did return, and we did open the bids, which we were legally able to do at that point. And the low bid, or only bid, was Mountain Crest LLC in the amount of $985,000. So got a few pictures to show you, and for the public as well, of where the area that we're talking about. This is the Google Earth view of Valley View before Hurricane Helene. So this is looking down Valley View. Old Orchard is this road that's right here, that kind of crossed off. Unfortunately, on September 27th, over 20 inches of rain fell in this area, and this is what remained. So this now is, this, as of September 27th, was the access to Old Orchard. So I'll go back and show you this with the trees and the vegetations to what became, and this is looking down in this area, what became a significant slope failure on Valley View. By looking at this, you can see the difficulty of putting together a scope for repair. The road and the unfortunate shoulder has disappeared into New Year's Creek. So where we were able to come in and bench in a temporary road to Valley View, it is, or to Old Orchard, it's been utilized ever since. So what we're proposing is a final scope that will put back this area into a permanent repair with the shoulder as it was previously, and a permanent road down to Old Orchard. This is the aerial view of the overall size of the failure and the landslide that took place. Again, this is Valley View coming down. So the first picture was looking this direction. This is the area of the failure from the top to the bottom of New Year's Creek. And essentially, this is where the windwarding trail kind of follows along here. This is about a 500-plus-foot length slide and about 300 feet elevation change here. So just again, going back to kind of give you a little indication of just the severity of this. So at this point, going to ask Jared if he would come up maybe and give you a little bit of insight to the scope and what was decided and why it took this long to get to this point, and the difficulty and nature of this repair. Thank you, Mr. Fox.
Counsel, I'm Mayor, I'm Jared Wright, McGill Associates, and I'm here to provide a little background. And Manager Fox did an outstanding job of setting the ball on the tee for me. I mean, as you can see, it was a catastrophic road failure, which, when McGill was pulled in, we also engaged geotechnical and structural engineer, Catawba Valley Engineering and Testing, to assist us in determining the best replacement method for this roadway. Ideally, a like-for-like replacement was considered, and that would be just replacing soil that did wash away. Ultimately, that option was not selected due to it really being infeasible. Geotechnical testing resulted in discovery of bedrock and a viscous layer, which is, you know, a wet layer of saturated soil between roadway and that bedrock, which allowed the slide. Of course, you know, as Mr. Fox mentioned, 20 inches of rain will do that, but unfortunately, you know, we can't prevent that from happening in the future, so we look for a more permanent solution. That solution includes two walls. One will serve as a temporary shoring mechanism, and that would be a soil nail wall. We need that temporary shoring mechanism to maintain access to those structures, residences, past the failure on Valley View and Old Orchard. So we'll be installing a soil nail wall that will allow us to maintain at least one lane of traffic and travel throughout construction, and then ultimately a gabion basket wall. The town has had success with gabion baskets in several other slope failure locations. Those are wire baskets that are filled with riprap stone. These walls are over 200 feet in length. It will be a lengthy construction process due to access. One of the things to consider is Valley View is a narrow road. All of the material will need to be trucked in, deposited, placed, and then those trucks are going to be, you know, using that road. And so we'll have to exercise caution throughout construction. But otherwise, we, we're very confident in this method. We've discussed with FEMA. I feel that they're confident with this repair method as well. So I'll be happy to answer any additional questions.
Hearing none. Thank you.
And I would add, from the FEMA's perspective, obviously, we've worked with FEMA sometimes daily, if not weekly, since the storm. And this is our last remaining project, and they've been with us every step of the way to get to this point. So mitigation, et cetera, have all been on-site, all have seen this, and all have approved this method or scope of the repair. And so we would like to move forward, if you wish, with awarding the bid to Mountain Crest LLC in the amount of $985,000. That is fully reimbursable by FEMA. Timeline may take a little while, unfortunately, because again, the scope of this project, it's going to take some time, and we're going into the winter months. So we have spoken with the contractor. We do hope to have a pre-construction meeting in the next couple of weeks and understand a better timeline of how we can get started, especially with the winter months that's coming up, and then hopefully have that finalized as soon as the weather is cooperative. I'll be glad to answer any questions you might have.
What will be the timeline for completion?
Well, it's going to depend on the weather. We did speak at the bid opening to the contractor, and he is optimistic perhaps that he could get started with the soil nails and the shock creek prior to winter, which would allow for work to be done potentially thereafter. But a lot's going to depend on the winter weather, when that arrives, and what work has to be done. The soil nails and the shock creek is utilizing concrete, so that is going to have to be done as temperatures allow. So can't give you a timeline as of right now. We're going to have to be a little bit understanding again with the winter months and what that looks like. But we will have more information as soon as we complete our pre-construction meeting within the next two weeks.
Thank you.
Certainly.
So we're, we're looking at approval of the bid of 985 plus 10%.
Correct, with the contingency. That is correct.
And FEMA has agreed to pay for?
It'll be like the reimbursement process we've gone through with one of Landrell or some of the other slope failures. So once the work is complete, we'll seek reimbursement at that point. So it is going to be a time-consuming process to get through that construction and seek those reimbursements. But they have been a part of each one of these meetings that we've taken on. Mr. Wright's been a part of those meetings recently, Mr. Chapman beforehand, and Mr. Baker as well. So we've, it's been a team effort to get to this point,
Counsel, like, make a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Pete?
Yes.
Doug?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
David?
Yes.
And Cat?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Shane. Thank you. And I will say, I've seen numerous emails from Shane, from the property owners, and I know they'll be pleased to see this come to fruition. So thank you. All right. Wow. Still light out. Well, I just want to say, uh, uh, thank you for all those that attended this evening. Uh, I will say that please be careful. We have a lot of pedestrians in town. We have a lot of traffic. Show extreme patience. Um, you know, we're used to our little town. Our visitors aren't. So be the friendly folks that we always are. So that's, oh, don't forget, I think we got election coming up November 4th. I hope everybody will get out and vote. And I'm sure the sun will be out, and it'll be 70 degrees.
I just wanted to say thank you to the town staff, council members, Mr. Fox, Joey, and my Blowing Rock family that reached out recently. My mother passed away, and the town, uh, uh, really made us feel special. And so I really appreciate that and extend that beyond, you know, all my friends in town and acquaintances. So I really appreciate that. It felt very small-town and warm, and I really appreciate everybody that did that for me and my family.
Melissa?
I'm good.
Doug?
I just got back last week from my retreat conference with risk management. If you don't mind, I'd like to hit a few highlights that was discussed down there. Most of it's not good, but one of the things, they're looking at cyber ransom is expected to go over $10 trillion next year. So, you know, that's, that's one thing that we'd look, Thomas and them, about doing here is, and they're doing a good job of trying to protect us as good as they can. Commercial auto liability is going to skyrocket. Right now, there's over three, over $5 million claims, or insurance is being sued, the state insurance is being sued. So, uh, that's, you know, another thing. A lot of towns are looking at different ways of trying to handle that right now. Where to go. FEMA, they're not doing a wave with, you know, there's been talk about the government doing a wave with FEMA. They're kind of restructuring, from what we're hearing. They're moving to upping what will be called a federal emergency, upping how much the worth that it's got to be to be declared a federal emergency. And we're, some places are still having, I know Hendersonville and some of them are having problems with FEMA, not wanting to pay what was called what was called high hazard areas during the floods. And that's their water plants and their sewer plants. They look at that being below ground and not really structured. So there's some things going back and forth, uh, there. We're told that, uh, uh, House Bill 369 is still out there. That was the parking. House Bill 627, accessory housing is still being discussed. Senate Bill 382, downsizing, uh, they look to come back in the spring on that. And they said, uh, I don't know, uh, they're trying to write in law, in, in, in the law enforcement side of it, uh, going from to a wrongful act instead of occurrence to see maybe that will put more burden on the plaintiff of trying to prove their cases because of so many high-dollar cases that's out there right now. Humana letters, uh, I don't know many people that hadn't received a stack of them probably in the mail. If, and it's letting you know what doctors are leaving Humana. Luckily, if you're a senior, um, under the Medicare part, most of that will still honor what's under the UNC system. So just a, a lot talked about in a, a short period of time down there. Body armor grants, I've discussed with Chief Kurt. They're, they're still offering those to soft bodies. So, uh, he's taken advantage of this before, and they're still looking at it. So that's it for me.
Doug, the last bill you mentioned, you said downsizing, you mean downzoning?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, a couple of things. First, as Chairman of the Economic Development Commission, we've been advised or given notice that the owners of the Boone Golf Course held a meeting recently to say that the property was going to be for sale and that it might, uh, involve some development, cutting the golf course back to nine holes and then doing some condos. So just so you know that that is probably coming. Secondly, uh, as Charlie mentioned, early voting starts on the 16th, Thursday. You can vote at the courthouse only until such time as, uh, November 4th rolls around here. And then it'll be an American Legion. So I hope everybody will get out and vote. Thank you.
Joey?
Mayor and Council, a few updates. Memorial Park is close to completion. Um, they are working on the sidewall curb and gutter along Wallingford this week. Um, and then once that's complete, they'll pave back the Wallingford area along with putting back the, um, steps and the slope to that, um, backside of the park. So we're within the next couple of weeks of that project being completed. Tennis courts will be open tomorrow. So that's an exciting, um, announcement. So they have been striped and painted and sealed, and, um, they'll join the basketball court and the pickleball courts for being open for public use. Audit was completed, the fill work was completed, and now we're wrapping up the report. So that should be coming hopefully in the near future. Exciting news on our website. Um, Mr. Steele, our IT Director, has been working with our vendor. And, uh, I got a chance to sit peek, peek of our new website. It's going to look very similar to Boone's, um, just this past week. And that's going to be coming around here in just the next couple of months as well, as we do some beta testing and get it ready for the public. Big weekend, as the mayor mentioned, uh, not only here in town, but a lot of stuff in Watauga County and surrounding areas, Valley Fair, Woolly Worm, and ASU's homecoming football game. This is the largest influx of traffic of the entire year. And then thank you, um, to Bob and Susan Hambright and the Village Foundation for putting on a lunch today for the employees. It was very gracious of them to do so and very appreciative of the work that, um, the town employees do each and every day. And that was the spotlight and the reason for the luncheon was to be provided. Um, and a major donor, um, or donation from Bob and Susan helped make that possible. So we want to thank Bob and Susan Hambright and the Village Foundation for putting on a lunch today for the employees. It was very, very appreciative.
If I may say something, Pete did mention early voting. If you live in Caldwell County and in Blowing Rock, you have to go down to the courthouse in Caldwell County to do early voting. Okay? If you go over to Watauga, you might have a problem.
They'll send you down.
They'll send you to Caldwell. Okay? So just keep that in mind. Okay, so the student union, I'm told, also has early voting. Okay, all right. Well, I'm too old to get into the student union, so. I do still have friends there working on their masters. All right, we're going to go into closed session. Ladies and gentlemen, under?
North Carolina General Statute 143-318, um, point 11, point 85.
Thank you. Thank you for attending this.